For you, so we have a record of those participating in this deliberation. Please do so, and thank you for your attendance. At this time, roll call. Present. Present.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Ar.
Here.
Okay, we have a full board, good news. All right, the next thing we'll do is call for our approval of minutes from our last meeting, and board members, those minutes were sent to us, and we have had an opportunity to read them. So if there are changes, we will entertain those questions at this time. And if not, I'll take a motion for approval.
A motion we approve?
I second. It is the move and property second that our minutes from our last meeting be approved as recorded. Roll call vote.
Ms. Fletcher?
Aye.
Ms. Lorgine?
Aye.
Ms. Bushman?
Aye.
Mr. Kessler?
Aye.
Mr. Ar.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. This board is composed of five persons with two supernumeraries and is empowered by the Alabama State Legislature, but appointed by the city council, and is charged with hearing petitions for relief from a literal and strict application of the zoning code. Cases are heard in the order in which they are filed, motions are made into positive, and each case requires a positive vote of at least four members. A simple majority will not approve an action. The burden of proof for variance and special exceptions rests with the petitioner. Any party agreed by any decision of this board may within fifteen days file a written notice of appeal to the circuit court. With that, from our agenda, we have two cases for tonight. And the first case is one that we continue from our April sixth meeting. So at this time, is the person who making that request in attendance?
I didn't see anybody. I spoke with someone, I just gotta get up. I spoke with someone today, they called representing Dr. Aurora. Said it's scheduled, I guess surgeries and different things, to prevent him from coming. And he was supposed to come, and then he said he had a conflict with it necessary that he came. And I said, yep, it's pretty necessary, because the board had questions. If the board doesn't have questions, it's, you know, you have, it's sometimes approved or whatever, a request. But if you have questions, somebody needs to be there to answer them.
Well, we appreciate that.
But they're not here. I sent them, because I was asking about the building and all those different stuff. I sent them the regs, I sent them the staff report, just like I had sent the applicant. And I was kinda expecting them to be here, or somebody to be here, but nobody's here, as you can see.
Well, we appreciate that update, and with your having informed them of the reason why they needed to be attended, and attended, I guess, once again, we can continue it, but...
I mentioned that, you have a June meeting, you have an application for June anyway. If you want to do that, you can, and just forward it on to June, or however you want to deliberate on it, it's certainly up to you.
Board members, by consent, since we know now that we are going to have a board meeting next month, can we just agree to hear that case next week, I mean, next month, if there's somebody here to present it, by consent? Okay, well, we'll do that, and we'll move on to our second case, case number, and this is a special exception request. Yes. So to put into a vote instead, okay, I will entertain a motion that we once again continue, case number VAR twenty twenty-three zero zero one, in regard to one twenty-two oh five County Line Road, where they were requesting a variance to section four dash six A four dash two, to allow a detached accessory building in the side yard, and a variance to section four six A six, to reduce the side yard setback from fifteen feet to sixty. Motion?
I motion to continue.
It is the move and property second that the reference case be continued until our June meeting. Roll call. Aye.
Aye.
Um.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the request is continued, and will be placed on the June meeting. All right, we have one other case, case number SE twenty twenty-three zero zero one, one nineteen Jet Plus Circle, Cheerville Athletics, is requesting a special exception to allow the use of indoor recreation in the M one restricted industrial district, as authorized in section four dash nine dash two of the zoning ordinance. So is there a person here to present that case? If so, sir, if you will come to the mic and state your name and make your request. And as you prepare, I know that you have had access to the staff report, and there was a detailed information there regarding parking spaces, and there was this one concern. So if you wanna make sure you address those things, so that you can be a little bit more specific, and that would speed us along.
Yes, ma'am. My name's BJ Lindenberg, I'm one of the owners of Cheerville Bowling Green Cheer Nastics. The brand we operate under is Cheerville. As far as I was concerned, or known, the parking was the big one, and I think the hours of our operation kind of alleviate that. The parking here is actually gonna give us more ample parking than we've ever had at most of our locations, but, and I think in the hours that we're in concern, we won't have that much traffic there. We don't do a lot of operations in that part of the day. Most of our kids have to get home, you know, off the bus, get driven there. So there's not many people that either drive themselves or anything like that, that come till later in the evening typically.
Well, two questions. Your neighbors, when you talked about the number of parking spaces they had, do you know whether or not they've been informed about this?
As far as I know, all of that's been done. I do know the gentleman that owns the building we're trying to get also owns that one, it wasn't hard to communicate with them. I believe we filled all that out, we had two, I believe, surrounding neighbors we had to speak with, and I believe all of that was taken care of and done.
All right, and also in staff report, now, it is recommended, and I don't know whether you've agreed to that, that the number of students be restricted to thirty on weekdays between three PM and five PM, and we just wanted to make sure that you didn't have an issue with that.
No, ma'am, that's actually what I was kinda referencing, back to the parking, also, when I first started speaking, was those hours are pretty light for us. And in fact, we're working on a lease to keep our other building in Athens that we currently have, so we won't have a lot of incumbent students at the new location anyway, so that definitely will not be a problem.
Okay, are there questions from any board members, anybody with questions? Johnny, have we had any phone calls, emails, or any invited to express their concerns about this request? Okay, well, if there are no questions, and we have no correspondence to discuss, at this time, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion we approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly second that in case number SE twenty twenty-three zero zero one, one nineteen Jet Plus Circle, Cheerville Athletics, be granted a special exception to allow the use of indoor recreation in the M one restricted industrial district as authorized in section four dash nine dash two of the zoning ordinance. Roll call vote.
Madam Chairman, let me just say, let's add the recommendations from planning to this, so, both to approve with the following conditions, the number of students be restricted to thirty on weekdays between three PM and five PM, the special exception shall be, shall only apply for the requested use at one nineteen Jet Plus Circle, Building A suite one oh one for a period of five years, or until the business license is terminated, whichever comes first.
Okay, with the first part of the motion being made, and I had started to proceed and had read the first part, all we're gonna do is the case as stated, to include the recommendation or requirement, that the number of students be restricted to thirty on weekdays between three PM and five o'clock PM, and the special exception shall only apply for the requested use at one nineteen Jet Plus Circus Building A suite one oh one for a period of five years, or until the business license is terminated, whichever comes first. Roll call vote. Aye.
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 Okay, the motion has been approved, so you may coordinate this, Johnny, in his office with the paperwork that may need to be done.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Is there any unfinished business that we need to bring before the board at this time? Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, well, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to vacate the continuance of the previous case.
Madam Chairman, I will move that we vacate the previous motion to continue case number variance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, for a property located at twelve two oh five County Line Road, on a managed Aurora, I hope I didn't mess that up.
I second. It has been moved and property second, that we will vacate of the previous motion, and here, case number variance twenty twenty-three zero zero one, in regard to one twenty-two oh five County Line Road, where they're requesting a variance to section four dash six A four dash point two, to allow detached accessory building in the side yard, and a variance to section four dash six A six, to reduce the side yard setback from fifteen feet to sixty. This request is in accordance with section ten dash five of the City of Madison zoning ordinance. Um, I didn't hear a second, did we? Did you second, didn't you? Okay, all right, with that, roll call vote, please. Aye.
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 Well, with the gentleman who's here to present the case, please come to the mic and state your name, and present your request.
Good evening, my name is David Evans, I am with Coca-Cola Bank of Commercial, represent Dr. Aurora on this matter. Oh, I talked with Mr. Lizard this afternoon, and he went through some of the requirements that you guys set forth, if we followed a few requirements, whether they be the materials of the building, the setbacks, and all those things, and we would actually apply by those recommendations.
Well, I think there was also a question regarding the materials that were going to be used, and the purpose of the structure.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Aurora wants to store a few medical equipment, things that are in and out of that office, just to keep them close to the building, but just some extra storage that he thinks necessary, that he could bring in and out.
Okay, board members, a real entertaining question from any board members at this time.
This one spec sheet says the exterior's gonna be T one eleven siding, is that correct?
Um, I do not know the specifics of that. I do know that we will, there's like five or six things that were on that list, I do not have it in front of me.
And what's, the building is there now, his office, what's it's constructed of? Is it a brick building?
That's correct.
And so you're bringing in a portable prefab building and sitting down, did you consider building a structure from the ground up?
This is gonna be a prefab building that's already constructed, that, you know, goes along with the guidelines of, you know, what was suggested and required.
Any other questions?
I don't know if it's gonna come out in the form of a question, but it's gonna come out in the form of a, in the form of a concern. The information that he has provided is basically a duplicate of what was provided at last month's meeting, and I was kind of hoping to have a little bit more information, but we're gonna hear what we got. The example that he has presented, in my opinion, doesn't conform to what we're talking about.
I did have...
The letter to, from the city to the doctor, says that it can't be a metal structure, but it says that it's gonna have a metal roof versus a shingle stick-built roof, and so, but, so I am confirming with you, with the information that you have from him...
Yes, ma'am, I do have...
Okay, so there's...
I do have updated, yes, ma'am.
You have updated, what, pictures?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear that? So I'll finish my statement. Basically, what you know, and you're presenting on behalf of the doctor, is basically what is included in the packet that we have, that we're going to make our decision on, is it a fair statement?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is what he's proposing.
And I believe that windows were an issue, to do it without the windows.
It's just two by fours. This is just an example.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody to work in? I don't, I mean, if, if, if the application and the materials and the pictures are as you stated, and this is the information we're working with, I don't think I have any questions.
Did any neighbors behind you, did you talk with any of them to see if it was okay with them? Oh, I'm sorry, it's okay if you all agree that, I don't, I can't see, I don't think I've seen a copy of the letter that you were referencing, but it doesn't seem to, from what you read, it doesn't seem to clarify any of the questions that we previously had, so I guess I have everything I'm supposed to have.
Yeah, you do.
I don't have that letter.
It's an email that was in the, right here, it's, it's right here.
Oh, okay.
The very last page had four or five specifications that were required, and we'll be glad, obviously, to meet those requirements.
Okay, I guess the main question, and it was already clarified before, that if we approve that the request, they will follow all the city codes and ordinances, so, I don't know. One of the things, though, it is requested when we live in a variance, that you described the hardship, that you're not being able to do what you're gonna do without our granting the variance, and I didn't notice a hardship presented in your presentation.
Yes, ma'am. This is something that he feels necessary, that will work with the medical building, it's, he thinks it's in the best interest of the tenants to have that space available. I'm not sure exactly what's gonna be stored, but it's, his need was, you know, to, you know, if there's medical furniture, things like that, because people are coming in and out, we have Crestwood that just expanded, and so there's always people moving in and out, and different equipment, so instead of moving them to a different location, he just wants to keep them close, and then he needs to bring them in, he can, and so on. It's mostly a medical building, dentist, three doctors' office, and Edward Jones.
Johnny, with the additional information, even though it's not that much different, but did that change staff's opinion in any way, now that we have specifics about the purpose and the material of construction? You didn't submit a change based on, you know, the dialogue you had had with them, so did what we hear, and what perhaps they shared with you, change your position of staffing in any way?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions?
So Johnny, I guess, I just want a clarification, so what you're referring to with Mary Beth, she would make sure that the new design conforms to that B two district regulations for architectural appearance?
She's active in this, and I wouldn't want to, hey, this is good, about her being upset.
Do we need to get her review on that before we vote here?
Well, as long as, if you're happy with the fact that if it meets the city regulations, then I can guarantee you that that would go through her.
Well, if, well, we have the word, and it is was given into writing as well, but with your being familiar with the staff's position, and I being assured that the rules, regulations, the ordinance will be met, the requirements will be met, the, let me see, the caveat where the accessory building can, may not cover any of the grates, you know, in regards to stormwater, and about the driving aisle, I think those are probably the two outstanding ones, because the other ones are structural. Did you all have any problems with those being met?
Absolutely not.
So, just to be clear for all of us sitting here, there's been a lot of information provided in what the building's gonna look like, and I guess in my position, that's really immaterial to me, with what you presented and the description of, you know, I don't wanna sit here and make you think that we're approving what you've handed to us, based on that the exterior materials and designs must be in accordance with the city, so, you know, I don't want, I guess I don't, for me, I don't want any confusion to think that something that looked like this is what we're approving. Okay, so I just, I just wanna say that out loud, because my vote would be no, I want to be sure that this motion is being left in the City of Madison's hands on the structures.
Well, basically, that was not a change, I mean, this, that drawing is a little bit better than what we had looked at, now, compared with you on that.
Not much.
Now, I'm saying, the drawing is a little better, but you still don't see what I thought we were gonna get.
Yeah, with the main building, and the block construction, and the, yeah. Absolutely. That's my concern, that's just why I wanted to be sure that you understand it, so, there's a lot of pictures going around, and that's why, I think, for my benefit, that we continued it, hoping that all we would hear was be a simple yes, we will construct it in the materials that match the main structure.
To this gentleman's point, we could get something together that, and then present it to her when she's available for approval, a little bit more detailed.
Well, I think the requirement that we're concerned about is addressed, and the staff's recommendation, and if that's what we put in our motion, that's what they're gonna be held to, that's all I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
I have one more question. Where's Senator I's list of adjoining property owners? Will that come after the vote? Because it says that an application for the variance is attached, but it's supposed to include the list of adjoining property owners. Sent from, I guess, Daniel?
Oh, okay, yeah, that was the requirement when I, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Before the...
Okay, all right, just making sure. Okay, any more questions?
I guess one question I had, I think I saw in the spec sheet here, it's gonna be tied down with hurricane straps to the asphalt, is that true?
I'm not aware of that, no, sir.
Sorry, did I saw, no, I saw it in here last...
No, we questioned down here about that last...
Well, it, that just makes it in accordance with the structure that it's gonna be attached to, was my concern, being in the real estate business too.
I apologize.
I've seen the years of...
I handed this thirty minutes ago to come represent.
Yeah, and I know how detailed we have to be to be sure, that's one of the reasons I just made that statement to you, was just so you don't misunderstand, as a real estate broker, and I'm a real estate broker, and we're all in on this board, that we're not approving that picture that you gave us.
Well, Johnny, one other question, going back to my board member, there was a note that was given in the packet, and that's what he was addressing. It was, I have attached the engineer drawings to this email, they show the wind rating. These drawings reflect mobile home anchors. We do not offer anchoring to asphalt. This would have to be completed by someone else after the building is dropped off, or you would have to have hose board in the asphalt for the mobile home anchor to penetrate. You may want to discuss acceptable options with the city. So did you all take a position on that? So they would ensure, then, if we use the motion with your recommendation, that last about being in accordance with, and all that, does that address those things being checked and required? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Madam Chairman, I will make the motion in reference to case, that we approved case SE twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, I'm sorry, wrong one, I've gone to the second one, let me start all over, case number variance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, at twelve two oh five County Line Road, requesting a variance to section four dash six dash A four point two, to allow detached accessory building in the side yard, and a variance to section four dash six A dash six, to reduce the side yard setback from fifteen feet to six feet. This request is in accordance with section ten dash five of the City of Madison zoning ordinance. This is also a case that was continued from the April sixth meeting, with the following conditions, the accessory building may not cover any of the grates receiving stormwater or block the natural flow of stormwater to the grates. Number two, the drive aisle may not be reduced or impeded by the proposed accessory building. The building's exterior materials and design must be in accordance with section four dash seven dash seven of the zoning ordinance, architectural appearance of buildings and structures in the B two district. All properties north of Sherborn Drive, Zone B three, must conform to the B two district regulation for architectural appearance. Number four, the signs required per the site plan regarding this potential for flooding shall be installed prior to the issuance of a building permit for the detached accessory structures.
Is there a second?
A second.
It is the move and property second, in case number variance twenty twenty-three zero zero one, one two two oh five County Line Road, be granted a variance to section four dash six A eight four point two, to allow a detached accessory building in the side yard, and a variance to section four dash six A six, to reduce the side yard setback from fifteen feet to six feet, with the following conditions, the accessory building may not cover any of the grates receiving stormwater or block the natural flow of stormwater to the grates. Drive aisle may not be reduced or impeded by the proposed accessory building. Number three, the building's exterior materials and design must be in accordance with section four dash seven dash seven of the zoning ordinance, architectural appearance of buildings and structure in the B two district. All properties north of Sherborn Drive... and structure in the B two district, all properties north of Sherborne Drive, Zone B three, must conform to the B two district regulations for architectural appearance, and the last one, the signs required, required per the site plan regarding the potential for flooding shall be installed prior to issuance of a building permit for the detached accessory structure. Roll call.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Ms. Lordine? Aye.
Ms. Bushman?
Nay.
Mr. Kessler?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Nay.
Okay, of, um, of course, our rule is that you must have four positive votes, so in that regard, the request has been denied. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I think we already called for unfinished business, and we had none, uh, do we have any new business that needs to come before the board? None? Johnny, we don't have any training coming up anytime soon, do we? 'Cause somebody asked me, okay, all right, yes.
Okay.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
They're moving property second, but at this time, we will adjourn until our next monthly meeting. Roll call.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Ms. Lordine? Aye.
Ms. Bushman? Aye.
Mr. Kessler? Aye.
All right, and thank you, board members.
All right.